Before you, as Brian shows, we have some updates. We are going to approve some meeting minutes from previous planning board meetings. We will be reviewing three petitions, special permit and site plan review petitions that will be going in front of the Winchester zoning Board of Appeals this coming Thursday. That's two days hence. After that, we will be discussing the planning boards retaining of a design consultant for future products, projects. We will be reviewing a proposed town meeting warrant article on the definition of half-story. We will be continuing our discussion of implementing the master plan implementation committee. And we are going to be talking about setting some working groups about in regards to accessory dwelling unit zoning and a project management working group for how the planning board manages its projects. So why don't we begin at the beginning? So Brian, do you have any updates for us?
Sure. One update. I wasn't sure if you also wanted to chime in on this as well, but we had a meeting about a property known formally as the Shannon Property. Then most recently known as the property of Forest Ridge, a potential mixed income, nearly 300 unit housing development. And we had a meeting because there's a letter of intent for the property. And by Mr. Bondi, this has been in the weekly updates for several, several weeks now. And the town essentially showed a preference for more than 10% affordable. Meaning that he's trying to do something similar to the Winning Farm, 55 and older. And the message really from the town was that if, if that is going to be possible, affordable housing would have to be closer to 15% at the 80% and below. D F, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Oh, it was, it was the, I think the important thing to note is that the the land has had, has, is a difficult place to develop. And the developers are currently looking at all options for the property. Although they do have preferences, Brian said, to follow their past development practices. That's, that's where they're, that's the wheelhouse. Yeah, that's, that's about, continue, Brian. Yeah.
Sure. And then this week I have another meeting with the Sims Corner Local Historic District Study Committee. And we're kind of doing a first assessment of how the survey has been going. There are 57 properties. We asked that only one member of the household fill out the survey and we received 30 responses. So 30 out of 57 is something, but it is not at all near where we need to be. So that's going to be most of the discussion on steps moving forward related to that. I did have the pleasure of meeting the new role that Chris Skelly had at Massachusetts Historical Commission. Her name is Jen Dougherty. And Jack Lamanage, the historical commission chair, and I met with her this week as well, as well as with Sally Dale from the planning. So that was a great development. She is going to be a large help to Winchester and its local historic district study committee moving forward. I'll stop there.
And I'm going to apologize in advance. My neighborhood has decided to play his loud electric guitar this evening. So jam along with it. The other thing of note is we have received an application for Ken Converse Place. And we, Brian and I met with the, the Chair of the Concom this afternoon, whatever, sometime today. And the Concom will be making a presentation to the planning board on September the 14th at that meeting discussing the Concom's role in this process.
Yeah. Can you, can you explain what Cam Con, what Concom?
I'm sorry. That's the Conservation Commission. And they are involved because they have jurisdiction over wetlands. And they are a, a committee which receives its power from the state. So they are independent of any of the local boards. So. Okay. I think that's about, we, we do have, and maybe we can sneak this in right here. Oh no, let's do the meeting minutes. And then Brian, we need to, and the board, we need to talk about how we want to continue meeting in terms of remote versus hybrid. Brian pointed out to me last week that we had voted to stay remote through the fall, but fall is coming up. So we should have another discussion, a very short one to determine what we want to do. So why don't we move, why don't we get the meeting minutes out of the way? Cause that's always a good thing to do. And so, I'm sorry, I apologize. Does the rest of the board want to have any updates? Sally, you are mute.
Yeah, I know. It's a terrible thing. I had some questions that I had written down to ask, but I, I'm thinking I'm not going to do that right now because it's not a good use of meeting time. I'll follow up with, with Brian separately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, so why don't we dive into the meeting minutes? And we have three, one, two, yes, three meeting, three meetings that we need to look at the minutes of. The first is the meeting on July 20th, 2021. And we have a quorum this evening, so we can approve this if we wished. I have one minor edit. And that is on the discuss, or the Iraqi alleged terrorists. And it's just in terms of, it states the developer's interested in adding a new cul-de-sac, which comes under the subdivision regulations. They are actually interested in subdividing the property. And so that's how we come in. And the fact that they need a cul-de-sac is a result of them needing to subdivide the property. So I would just change the language. The developer is interested in subdividing the property and adding a new cul-de-sac. Just to clarify that.
That's fine with me.
Are there any other edits?
Um, one thing on page two, where Mr. Bellevoe says his current concept is to have six homes, three homes at one level and three at the cul-de-sac level. What does that mean? What is a cul-de-sac level?
I had, I had a proposed correction for that eaching that what he explained was his current concept is to have six homes arranged across two levels at the top of the ring.
Okay. So upper and lower.
Yes.
Upper and lower. Okay.
You were going to put.
That, that didn't make sense. What the cul-de-sac level, they're all in the cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
Okay. So why don't we, with those two changes and.
I have other edits.
Oh, you do? Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
That's okay. Under PB discussion, first bullet, it says the planting board has granted a waiver in the past. I'd like to clarify to say the planning board has granted a cul-de-sac waiver in the past. And on the third bullet, where it says the scale of the cul-de-sac seems enormous, it would be clarifying to me. I remember Cheryl talking about this, that the scale of the cul-de-sac circle seems enormous. And those were my only edits on the June, July 20th meeting minutes.
Okay. That seems, that seems good. So why don't we, so Sally, if you send your edits to Nancy.
Yep, I will.
And I will send my edit to Nancy. And I forgot to introduce Nancy. Nancy Polkari is our recording secretary. And we also have Brian Zekely, our town planner. I apologize. Okay. So the motion would read to approve the planning board meeting minutes of July, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, July 20th, 21 as amended. So moved. Do we have a second?
I second.
And let's do a roll call vote, please. Eching Scott.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Dea Jarius, aye. So there's that one. Our next one is Wednesday for the meeting on Wednesday, July 28th, 2021. Any edits on that one?
I have no edits.
I have no edits.
I had one edit and I would just say that in the description, if you go under section one, whoop, back, right? Go up, Brian, yes. In the second sentence, it's notes that Chair Ruth Tramarchi is attending. Former Chair Ruth Tramarchi, at the time she joined us, she is no longer the chair. So.
And that's, that's former Climate Action Advisory Committee Chair.
Okay, right. Former C A A C Chair. Okay. So if that's the only edit. So the motion would read, move to approve the planning board meeting minutes for Wednesday, July 28th, 2021 as amended.
May I interrupt?
Oh yeah, go ahead Nancy.
I'm noting the Chair Ruth Tramarchi, it was the Chair of the Sustainability Selection Committee.
Oh. Oh.
Good, Nancy. Good.
So I will, I will make that clear. How's that?
That would be perfect because I, I, I've only ever heard Chair Ruth Tramarchi next to C A A C. So thank you Nancy. Yes. If you could make that clear. I let's, let's keep that motion, but change as amended to as amended by Nancy Polkari. Is.
So moved.
Second, roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
Aye.
Eching Scott.
Aye.
Dea Jarius, aye. That's three zero. Okay. We move on to our last set of meeting minutes and this is for I want to make sure we're all, yes. I want to make sure we're all here. This is for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And are there any notes on that one? Go ahead. Sally, please.
Um, in the members' absence section at the top of page one, so Heather submitted her resignation on August 2nd. So technically she wasn't an absent member as she no longer a member at that time. And that same change would occur under number seven on page three, where it said, it would, it would say Heather Hannon resigned on August 2nd.
I thought she resigned and then to step off in September.
No, she resigned immediately.
Oh, I see.
So the first sentence under updates chaired, Chair Jarius, Heather Hannon submitted her resignation on August 2nd. And then the, the other edit that I had was in the second sentence under Chair Jarius, D F. So help me here. Did you really suggest that Brian be the facilitator?
I think that's talking about the select board.
Yeah, no, that's the select.
Select board is the subject.
Yeah. No, I did not.
This is correct.
I did report that the select.
Oh, I see. The select board is convening and the select board suggests. Okay. I get it. Strike that edit. And then I only have one other edit on, on, on. No, I don't. You got the one on page three. That's all I had. Good minutes, Nancy.
Uh, which edit on page three again?
Well, the one on page three would say under additional item Chair Jarius, which I find very difficult to say. Heather Hannon resigned on August 2nd.
Okay, okay. That's, yeah, because it's also under updates on page one. So.
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, that's fine. You can add August 2nd. Okay. So with those edits, the motion would read would prove, move to approve planning board minutes for the Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 meeting as amended.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please. Eching Scott.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Dea Jarius, aye. And thank you very much Nancy, as usual. Excellent minutes. And we will make sure that we get our edits to you ASAP. Thank you very much. And we are remarkably only one minute off our schedule. So what we're going to move into now are, we have three petitions for the Z B A that the planning board will discuss. The planning board is an advisory board to the Z B A. And so we do not rule on these petitions. We tend to look at this from a planning view perspective, but we do take into account what we hear from historical and design review commissions. And if we will open up the floor to comments from the public, if the board feels that it's useful for our discussion. This is not a public hearing, unlike the one at the Z B A, which is a public hearing. Okay. So why don't we start off with the first one, Brian?
Sure. 22 Mayflower. So the petitioners are seeking 357, a section 3.5.7 in the Winchester zoning bylaw. So as to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single family located on a lot that does not meet the lot with and construct a new senior family that will meet all setback requirements in a different location than the original property. It's located in the RDA zoning district and contains about 30,000 square feet. The historical commission found no adverse impact on a historical resource. Six oh with one absent and the design review committee voted favorably six oh with the following conditions. The evergreen trees along the north property line between 22 and 20 shall be protected from damage during construction and the tree protection fence is recommended. And the grading on the north side of the house shall be revised to include a low stone wall. This will reduce the impacts on the tree and eliminate the three to one slope toward 20 Mayflower. You can see here that the setbacks are improving how slightly, except for the, the rear setback. But the location of the house is more in line with, in this location, more in line with the rest of the houses on the street. So in order for it to be pushed back, in order to be a conforming, to have conforming a lot with, it would be, the building would have to be pushed back around 90 feet, which is inconsistent with the prevailing houses in the neighborhood, which are about that 35 to 55 feet arc. So I had nothing to add to the D R C's conditions and I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition.
So why don't we ask the town engineer, the town's assistant engineer, did I get your, your, your position correct, Brian?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So why do, does the engineering department have anything to say on this?
Um, but there is, as Brian said, that there was an increase in impervious surface on this project. And the applicant has made in their design, the installation of stormwater infiltration systems. However, in their application, their design calcs were absent from the submission. So it was difficult to reconcile their design versus, you know, the, the reconcile, like understand their approach to the design. So fundamentally, I think they're on the right track. However, we didn't have any specifics to verify that the system of work is designed during the, the review period. However, this morning, the applicant through their engineer had submitted information. So hope to get that reviewed very soon.
And presumably you would be writing a memo to the Z B A as to your findings using those new numbers.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So we don't, we don't have to put a condition on ours because you're going to do all the work. Thank you. And I, I did. Okay. So why don't we have the board discuss and then we'll see if anyone out there wants to talk about the project. So let me open up the floor to, why don't we start Eching? Did you want to?
Yeah, I have a technical question. So for a lot width, the primer is 120 feet and then existing is 108 and proposes 111. How do you increase that? Where is that line measured from? Is it the facade of the building?
So it's through the whole, the, the definition is through the whole house. That's the way it's always been. So it's from the front of the house to the back of the house. It has to have that lot, that has to have at least that width. So basically between, yeah, at the front of the house, it has to have 120 feet. And all the way through the house into the back of the house, that whole width needs to be 120 here. Wait. Okay. So here's just a parcel map that are part of their application. So yeah, the 120, it would have to be 120 here and every inch in between here. So it's this whole block that needs to be 120. It's totally personally, it doesn't, well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what I think of the bylaw at the moment. That, that, that is, that's the definition.
Yeah, it's a very strange calculation. And what, what is the purpose behind that? What, what do you think is the intention?
Uh, I, it's a total guess. So I want to be very clear that it's, it's a total guess. But at the time when these last were created, sometime in the, around 1970, sorry, 1973, when the RDA 20 was, was created in this location, it, it allowed large, this is the largest lots in town. So it's 20,000 square feet. These are, so there's a lot of space here. And what the width did in this case where the width had to be 120, where the frontage has to be 100, it allowed it for there to be more space between the buildings. So it was basically kind of taking, ma- making sure you either had a pie shaped lot or that there was more space between the building.
Okay. So we're talking about a difference of about eight feet from the proposed and the requirement. For such a large lot, I really don't think that that's an issue. Um, I, you know, I, I do have a, a thing with, with that, the particular lot size of, of, I mean, the zoning overall of that, that area. But I mean, for this, I, I just don't see that eight feet is that would encroach on the neighbors so much. So for, to me, this is totally fine.
Okay. I just wanted to, to chime in one thing. Eching, you asked why the lot width changed and the proposed and the existing, and that's because they pushed the house back into the lot. Right?
It's funny though. Oh, right. Right. I see. Because it's, it's getting wider as you go.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so Sally, did you have some comments?
I did. And I emailed them to Brian earlier this evening, but I can also read you what I said to Brian about this property. I had three points. They all related to saving the trees, which is something that the design review committee had advocated for. And I said that to help save the long line of hemlocks, they're actually labeled cedars on the plans, but they're hemlocks. And to save the 24 inch hickory on the north boundary, I'm concerned that building a retaining wall in this location, which is something that the design review committee recommended, would actually harm the roots of these trees rather than help them. And this is in my email that I sent to Brian, the compaction of tree roots over, during construction very often kills trees, usually over two to three periods. So I said, in lieu of retaining, of a retaining wall, the area should be sensitively regraded so that the slope steps down to the existing grades at the porch with strong attention paid to ensure no compaction of tree roots occurs during construction. And my second point was also to protect the roots of the 20 inch maple along that north border, the location, and this would be for Brian. Oh my God, I forgot your last name, Brian. The other Brian. Sorry. Manter. That, that, um, that the location of the stormwater retention, infiltration structure would be adjusted so that the structure is not near the roots of this very large tree. And I realized near is a relative term. I just didn't have time to specify the distance, but typically it's definitely not under the drip line and as far away as possible. And then point number three is the junipers that the plan shows to be planted along the house under the shade of the trees. They require full sun and will not thrive. And the Florida dogwood that's planted right underneath, it's proposed to be planted under the canopy of the hickory and the maple and the hemlocks will also not thrive. And I said, as a condition, the landscape plan should be reviewed by a licensed landscape architect and revised to show proposed planting that will serve a purpose and thrive.
Um, Brian, could you bring up a map of this so that we can indicate where these areas of concern are?
Uh, yep. Give me just a little bit. Okay.
And we are, yeah. So let us move quickly through these as we, yeah.
Um, I, it also might be your, your call, D F, if the applicant wanted to respond to, to those concerns at some, yeah. So.
So why don't we?
I can go through the photos or did you want to do?
No, just, just, let's go to the landscaping.
The street view is a better view of the trees, but the, the landscape plan is probably more relevant.
Yeah. So we can get to the landscape plan, which is I don't know what it is in the digital copy.
I just want to remind everybody that we have 10 minutes or 13 minutes.
Yeah, we're already, I think maybe we didn't allot too little time to this. I, while Brian's searching for that. There we are. So the, Brian, can you point out where the retaining wall that the design review committee suggested where that would go? If you can figure out where they said they wanted it to go.
I believe it was on the left side of the, of the cropping.
That's correct. The north arrow is pointing such that the left is north. And you can see that against the house, there's a number of circles that is proposed shrubbery. You can see that lightly shaded area. Actually, the, the, what would you call it? The, 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 the shade of those hemlocks by street view extends significantly over that area. And unless they were to be cut back, which isn't typically what people do with hemlocks, at least at that size. Those plants are in the shade and won't survive. And the same goes with the dogwood up above. And then you can see where the retention basin is.
Okay. So why don't we, and I'm going to have to turn off my video because I'm getting really bad quality of this zoom is dropping for me. So I'm going to turn my video off. Apologies to everyone. So let us, um, I think that you raised good points. I don't, these are, I, my concern is I don't actually see which trees are removed. There's one tree that's removed, but I don't, there is.
There's a tree in the middle of the driveway, the proposed relocated driveway that will have to be removed. And there's a tree behind the terrace uncovered patio that has an X in it that shows removing existing.
Yeah, it's, it's very hard to read. So what I'm going to say is I don't, I can't actually figure out exactly which trees are removed. I don't know what removing existing tree typical means. Does that mean that the 24 inch tree is typical of the trees that are to be removed? We don't know whether that tree is in good shape or not. Is it moved for aesthetic reasons or is it being moved because there's a, a safety or health concern? All of those things feed into my understanding of the landscaping. For me, I agree with Sally. For me, I agree with Sally that the biggest issue here is the landscaping. I don't have the depth of knowledge to comment on Sally's comments.
If I may?
And so let me, let me, uh, prior to opening this up to, uh, the applicant or neighbors, I want to ask the board if they are willing to open up to discussion with, uh?
Uh, quickly.
Okay.
I agree, quickly, we're short on time.
Yep, okay, so, uh, the person who just spoke, who is it, please?
My name's Bruce Ringwall from Goldsmiths Preston Ringwall with the engineering firm, um, in coordinating this application.
Okay, and, uh, can you limit yourself to a couple of minutes? You've heard our, our, our concerns?
Very, very quickly. Um, the hemlocks are along the, uh, pretty much the northern property line. There, the two trees that you asked about with the X that are in the back of the house, one is within the footprint of the house, the other is, uh, very close to the rear house, about ten feet away. So from the standpoint from, uh, constructibility, uh, those have been, um, proposed to be removed. The proposed dogwood and the trees and the planting underneath it are actually, um, wide open to the southern exposure, uh, and they'll be receiving, uh, much sunlight throughout the day. Uh, south is diagonally across the, the sheet to the opposite side, the, the arrow is in the back. If you go pull back forward to where you were, Brian, that'd be great. Yeah, um, so, uh, the junipers along the side, uh, they're gonna be shaded from the house, if anything. Uh, junipers can survive in, uh, partial sun and shade. I've actually looked into changing those if we do go with a small retaining wall. The retaining wall I was going to put closer to the sidewalk and further away, so that, um, as you mentioned, Mrs. Dale, uh, that the, the grading would be, uh, not disturbed around the roots of the hemlocks, so that the hemlocks could stay there. I apologize for my surveyors, but they're very good at land surveying and not very good at, uh, their tree identification. I'm happy when they get deciduous over evergreen. But they, they're very good at the other parts, and so, um, I think the dogwood will be fine, because they'll have, uh, plenty of exposure from sun from right through to the early afternoon. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm fine with either sensitive grading or a retaining wall, as long as the ZBA can work out one or the other, because having two different comments from two different boards coming at them. But that, that's all I've got.
And, and can I just address my third point about the, I wanted to shift the angle of that other retention, I don't know what it's called.
Oh, yes. As Brian mentioned, we've, uh, we've modified some drainage calculation, or gave him drainage calculations, today, and because of the groundwater elevation that we found in the rear, uh, we had very deep drainage structures in there, uh, but when I went out and did the soil evaluation, I'm a soil evaluator amongst other things, uh, so we've changed that orientation a little bit, uh, it's a, a lower profile and, and a bigger orientation of, uh, of, uh, infiltration chambers, but, uh, I have no problem modifying it and such to, um, pull it further away from the tree roots. It's not a problem.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, so why don't I, why don't we move quickly to our decision? I've got, um, I've got three conditions that I believe I've heard. One is to place the retaining wall firmly from the hemlocks to protect the roots. The other is to modify the location of the, what are we gonna call this? The, uh?
Stormwater, stormwater, what, Brian, manter, what is it called?
Yeah, I call it.
Stormwater, I missed the other word.
Infiltration.
Infiltration system. My, my audio is going to heck right here. And the other condition that I would like to add is to plant new trees of similar species in canopy to replace the trees which will be removed. So we have, uh, hopefully, a, a comparable set of canopies eventually. So, um, those are, if, if the board agrees with those conditions, anything else that the board might want to put on this?
So just to a- address, um, the comments of the applicant, um, that's fine, if you believe that the plants that you plant on the north side of the house will thrive. It was simply an observation that when you look at on street view, the, the shade of those existing trees extends over the area he's proposing to plant in.
Right, um, is that, is that a factor which, um, I, I just want to get the factors which would?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it translates to a condition. It's, at this point, it's an observation if the tree is dying. It's an observation, thank you, Brian, um.
Okay, um, so why don't we, um, move to a vote on this? Is there a motion?
Uh, so the motion is, um, not clear to me. So you're saying that, 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 the, the condition would be that if the applicant does not, in the process of prioritizing, not disturbing the roots on the trees of the trees on the northern border, as an alternative to a retaining wall, a sensitive regrading of that portion of the property, would be done to, of, to, because when you build a wall, you dig a lot and you, you tromp and you have equipment.
Okay, so, so, um,
Right.
What, uh, what, give me a language, give me a one-sentence language.
So the condition would be that, because it, Brian.
It's on the, yeah, I mean, it's, it's on, it's on, it's on the screen here, I, I think you.
No, no, it's not, Brian, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. So the condition would be that, um, um, because compaction of tree roots often kills trees, the area should be sensitively regraded.
So we can just take that last sentence in your, in your number one?
I think so.
Okay, so that's our first condition. Second condition is modify location of the stormwater infiltration systems as possible to protect root systems?
Of the large maple in the immediate, Jason.
Systems of large maple. Brian, can you, are you typing, or am I writing?
Right, I, I don't know what you'd be doing either. It's, it's, we have it, um, here in, in this, we could just reference this, like.
I think it's the clerk I'm supposed to be capturing this, I'm sorry, guys.
Okay, okay, so we'll, so number two, so we've got the fir-, the last sentence in number one, the second sentence in number two, I mean, we need to get this so Sally, or so Nancy can figure out what it is she's.
And then, this condition number two for twenty-two Mayflower is that, um, the, uh, I gotta find the words here. The stormwater infiltration structure location should be adjusted so that the structure is clear of the roots of the twenty-inch maple.
Okay, along the north border.
Yeah.
And then, um, my condition is to plant new trees of similar species in canopy to replace the trees which will be removed. And.
Alright, so collectively, that, there could be a motion to, 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 to those three conditions.
Yeah, so the, i- is there a motion to approve, to recommend favorable action with these three conditions on twenty-two Mayflower Road, ZBA petition three nine four six?
I can make that motion.
Okay, okay.
So, so, so moved.
Um, is there a second?
A second, eh?
Excellent, uh, so roll call vote, please. Sally Dale?
Hi.
Ee Ching Scott?
Hi.
You have Jerry's eye, um, thank you very much. Let's move now to petition number three nine four seven, Seventy-one Nelson Street. Brian, if you could queue it up for us?
Uh, yep. So, uh, this is petition three nine four seven. Okay, so they're seeking a three, a section three point five point five special permit to conduct, to construct an addition that will be located close to the side property line, permitted as a right. Historical commission found no adverse impact on historical resource. And six zero, and the Design Review Commission voted unfavorable with six zero with the following design issues that should be resolved prior to approval. Talking about corner boards, the existing house should, uh, match the corner boards, uh, to be included on the addition, and if the cantilever portion of a post second story addition should have a post to wall to anchor it, it need not be structural, but it's set it with its need for balance. Um, and, uh, condition about proposed windows that should be more aligned and that the roof lines are close but do not align and should be fixed. This is a second story addition, uh, over an existing one-story bump out. Uh, house was built in eighteen seventy, no records were found on that Chris, uh, from a far road or in, uh, um, reforms, um, uh, within the Winchester Historical Commission, either. The proposed additions in the rear of the building will be shielded from most views. I agree with the DRC's recommendations and would vote favorably the conditions outlined will met.
Okay, is there, uh, anything from engineering on this one?
The engineering department has no comment on this project.
Okay, um, and, um, are there, are there, um, butters in the audience this evening for this property? Since we don't have a chat, if you could just unmute yourself and call yourself, call out your name if you are. And I'm going to assume that we have Noah Butters. That's my biggest concern is the effect on the abutting property. So why don't we open up discussions to the board? Keeping ourselves very to the point.
Uh, Ee Ching, do you want to go?
I can go first, Sally.
Well, so I sent some comments to Brian, and you can put them up on the screen. So I said, um, the structural support, and this is really, um, important, I mean, I'm not a structural engineer, but the structural support for the proposed second-floor master bedroom cantilevered above the existing first-floor structure appears to be non-existent or structurally inadequate. A structural engineer should be hired to evaluate the architectural plans for this addition, as it does not appear to be structurally sound. Adding a column for aesthetic purposes between the cantilever and the deck would serve no structural purpose unless it is set into the, into a footing. In this, it has, oh, bad writing, but you get it. And then I said that I noticed that there's a shed located immediately on the property line, and that I thought it should be moved to meet code, and I concur with the Design Review Committee's recommendation that the two roof lines, they didn't say should be aligned, they said you should examine if they should be aligned, but I think they could be. So I don't know if Brian Manter wants to talk about any concerns about structural.
I, 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 I just want to point out that that's really not something that we can get into. Structural engineering is not our purview, and that is, we can't really discuss that.
So I appreciate that observation, thank you, Dia.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's important, but we don't have, uh,
We don't have.
We don't, yeah, we don't, and we also don't have the knowledge here on this board, I think. So, um.
I defer to engineering on item one, and, um, it could be that for item two, you know, there's an intentional waiver on file, who knows? And for number three, I concur with DRC's recommendation.
Okay, um, I, let's, the, the shed issue, it's out of code in the sense that it's too close to the property line?
It's inside the setback right on the property line.
I think accessory buildings are supposed to be five feet away.
Thank you, Ee Ching.
Yeah, so that is something that we would have to, um, why don't we make a note of that? To draw to, I mean, I don't know when it was put in there.
It looks, it looks like it's temporary, it's like a very fairly temporary shed.
Yeah, so I don't know how those fall into, uh, Brian, do you know, do we, do we cover temporary sheds?
Um, generally, um, it is the five feet, uh, for, but, um, it matters when, if it's, if it's, there are many sheds that are right on property lines that were used, you know, back-to-back, whether in lots where, we'll just go back, where backyards backed up against other backyards. So there, there are a lot of sheds that are on the property line, but most likely, it's just a pre-existing non-conformant, but the, but it means it's supposed to be five feet if it was new, for example.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, so I think that's a, it's a, um, Ee Ching, did you have?
Yeah, um, I feel for the applicant because it's, uh, smaller than lot size than the required. It's five thousand square feet, which is tiny, and I would advocate for, you know, um, rehabbing existing homes to make it more habitable for contemporary times. Um, however, I, I'm also concerned, uh, um, for the butters. Um, I just wonder when we draw the line between, um, allowing building, um, you know, that's not compliant, um, and when we allow it. Certainly, kind of, I thought maybe because it, it's higher, you can see it from the driveway, from the butters driveway, you know, and it's, it's just more building, right, at, tighter, um, tighter to the lot line. And I, um, I don't know, I don't know where to draw the line, but like, I feel for the applicant. I think that probably, you know, extending it is necessary, but, um.
Do we, do we have a, a view of this so that we can see where the, the neighbor's property is?
You know, Brian, if you go into Google Maps.
It's separated by a driveway, yeah, I'm, I'm at Google Maps too, and it's, um, you can see it through the driveway.
Right, so if they're separated by driveway, um, generally, you don't move driveways, so, um, I also, um.
Yeah, I'm not so, Ee Ching, I'm not so concerned, and, and you and I have talked, Ee Ching, about the notion of the, of our, our belief in the importance of, of using existing structures for environmental and historical purposes. And so it wasn't so much that it was higher or that it was, um, because it's not any closer than it already is.
No, it isn't, but it is higher, and you can see it from, say, if you were in the backyard of the butters side, you would see more building. I mean, I, I just, I, I'm fine with it too, but I just think that when, when do we draw the line, right?
Well, I would draw the line on the shed, and, and, and then this other question that's outside my purview.
Well, let's, um, I mean, I think that.
But. Our, our purview is zoning.
That's correct, and setbacks.
So I think that one of the things we can do is ask that, uh, one of the conditions we could put on is ask the shed be moved to reduce the, the encroachment on the neighbors
Yeah.
into the setback, and that might reduce, although I know that the neighbor has a six-foot-tall, um, privacy fence, right? But I think it might help if that, um, so one condition would be to, um, move the existing shed outside of the setback area, or move it so that it is, uh, so that it is, what's the right word?
Inconformance?
And so it is in conformance with code?
I mean, that, that, I would, I think that might be unrelated, unrelated to this petition. I mean, as a condition, um, you're saying to mitigate, is, is it to mitigate the scale of this rear addition off the back, off the back of the house? You should move the shed, and that will make, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the condition. I guess that's the, as blunt as I can be.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's really difficult, because we have a lot of the conditions in town, especially in the zoning where the lots don't even conform to sixty-five hundred, hundred square feet, because they predate all of that, where, um, people are just grateful for every square inch they have.
The, the.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I unfortunately, my, my connection dropped out, so I lost most of what Brian said, except for the last part where he didn't agree. So, which is fine, I, 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 I don't, I don't feel really strongly about this, uh, so, uh, Ee Ching, do you feel?
I want, I want to say yes, um, but I, you know, I just, I just wonder, I mean, I, I, I want to say yes, but I just wonder how, how we decide whether to say yes or no, because I, it,
I, I don't know the, yeah.
But it is, it is, it's existing non-conforming, and to add a story on existing non-conforming. But it is, it is, it's existing non-conforming and to add a story on existing non-conforming is different from, say, building. Um, you know, fresh, so, um, I, I'll say yes.
Well, I was just asking whether what your feeling was on this condition of moving the shed.
Oh, that, that doesn't bother me. I think it's a fire issue because it's too close to the house, but I mean, I don't think that we're enforcers of that.
Well, well, no, we're not. I mean, I think, I think the, my feeling from the board is the board is willing to move to approve this. Or to, to recommend favorable action. Um, the only question is whether the board would add, other than, um. I mean, I believe we should, uh, also follow, um. Agree with the DRC's conditions because I think they're reasonable. Um, so I would suggest that, um, we are, we accept. The DRC commissions as one of, or conditions as one of our conditions. I don't know if the language is on that, the only question is, um, and that we ask. That the developer can, or that the owners consider moving the shed. In order to provide some relief to the neighbor, but it could make it a suggestion rather than a requirement.
Yeah, suggestion is not a condition, it's almost not even, um.
It could go into the, into the discussion that goes along.
That's good, that's good. Um, so, Diab and Brian, help me out here because, you know, we all saw Florida collapse. And I just don't see how this thing's going to stand up and I really.
That's not our, that's not in our, like, we don't determine that.
Subject, subject to structural review?
I, but it's, it's not really.
Everything, everything has to be inspected by the building inspector. I mean, this, this is not, yeah, this is not us.
Yeah, it really isn't us. I mean, Frank Lloyd Wright would say he can cantilever the heck out of anything, so don't look for any supporting posts. So.
Yeah, so I, I would say I wouldn't, I mean, I don't, I don't agree with the entire DRC stuff. I mean, the corner boards, it can't even question, I mean, they, they can do what they want to do, but within our purview, it's about, it's about setbacks.
Good, so I, I'm in favor of.
Will someone make a motion then, please?
Um, I make a motion to, um. With, for favorable actions.
Recommend favorable.
Recommend favorable action and I don't think we had any conditions, is that right?
I think.
To note that the, um, the accessory shed is on the lot, lot line.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Well, can I amend the motion, Yicheng, to say that the accessory shed on the light, that it would be nice if the owner considered moving the shed? Off the lot line.
Why don't we just put that in the comments from the board to the ZBA?
Excellent, thank you, Dea.
And so is there a second on the, on the motion to endorse or to recommend favorable action?
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Um, Yicheng Scott?
Hi.
Sally Dale?
Hi.
Yevgerius, I, thank you very much. Um, we're now going to move on to the last of our, um. ZB A petitions for the evening. Uh, Brian, you want to kick this one off?
Yes, so this is thirty-three, um, Dunster Lane. Petitioner seeks site plan review under nine five one to construct a house that's more than thirty-six hundred square feet in RG. And the, uh, the lot contains nineteen thousand square feet. Historical commission found no adverse impact on historical resource. And that the garage should not extend past the porch or the facade of the house. And the design review commission voted unfavorable six oh, um, and there were a number of conditions. We could, we could go through that or I could talk about that. Um, I, I can go through the, um. After, but there are a number of conditions that you saw in my memo. So the, the real note here is that the petitioners gone through the historical commission already for a demolition permit. In October of twenty nineteen, um, I attached the B form, uh, uh, with my memo. Uh, so it was a split vote, um, and, and the historical commission voted to impose the delay. So twelve months lapsed in October of twenty twenty and they're now seeking a site plan review to build a conforming house. That's over the square, that's over the threshold for square footage of thirty-six hundred. Um, so the original resource was built nineteen twenty-four. And now two and a half story, uh, thirty foot tall, uh, structure appears to be within the scale of the prevailing neighborhood in terms of height. Um, especially including a lot of the new construction on that street. I agree with the DRC, um, and the, and the historical commission that the facade, uh, should be in line with the garage. And, um, I think it makes sense to make the porch larger to bring it up to the garage would probably be the best way to do that. Um, there are some architectural inconsistencies that the design review had labeled in their conditions. Um, and I recommended favorable action with regards to the petition if the garage in the front plane were aligned. And the window proportionality were more consistent.
Okay, um, do we have any comments from engineering on this?
Um, yes, um, so technically their approach, their project makes sense. Um, nothing, nothing major stood out. They will be installing infiltration system. Um, to mitigate or offset the increase in previous surface. The one comment I'd like to make to the board is that there appears to be some sort of like wet areas, the left, on the left side of the property. Um, so we'd recommend that the applicant review this project with conservation to ensure that, um. That they don't hear no intent or that they're not within a purpose zone.
Okay, and that is something you will be, um, you will be making submission to the ZBA with that comment in there, Brian?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Why don't, um, I see that we have at least one person who is.
Yeah, I submitted Brian, to comments to Brian.
Yep, yep, I just, yep, I, I just wanted to note, it looks like we have one person from, uh, uh, who's associated with this. Um, petition with us this evening, if the board wants to speak with them later. So Sal, uh, Brian, if you want to bring up Sally's points.
Thank you, Dea, thank you, Brian.
Yep, I'm different there. So, um, it was, right, uh, one and two are here.
Yeah, and then there's this, I, I don't know if I had a.
And then the third, and the third is your, um.
Right, so what I said was that I agree that the garage should not protrude in front of the house. And for comment number two, I said, the house does appear to be oversized. When I look at the first four plans, there's a huge amount of wasted space in the center of the structure. It seems to me to very, to be a very efficient layout. We have diminishing natural resources and a need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from residential structures. And the entire design of the house, in my view, should be revisited to arrive at a more efficient and cost-effective design. If those comments are outside the purview of the planning board, um, I acknowledge such. And then my third comment, which came in up above. If Brian scrolls there, I said, the landscape plan doesn't seem to be a meaningful addition, sorry for the typos to this package. But a placeholder, I believe that they need a purposeful and aesthetically rational landscape plan. It seemed like things were just stuck down like in color form fashion, so I just wasn't impressed with the package, sorry.
Okay, um. Yicheng, did you have some comments?
Um, I think that the project looks fine to me. I, I think, you know, the lot size is three times as large as what's necessary. The, this front setback is really setback. Um, as for aesthetic, um, comments, you know, uh, design review did their job. Um, I, I, you know, I think that within our purview of zoning and setbacks. I would take Brian's comments about the wetlands and, um. You know, note that as a condition to, to visit with Concom. But, other than that, it, it seems fine to me.
Okay, um, so my comments are, um. In particular, the landscaping plan doesn't show any indication of which trees have been removed. Or are planning to be removed, um, so I can't, I can't determine what effect it will have on the environment. So I think that's quite missing. I believe that it, it, you know, the, you know, the, the planning board in the past has, has decreed. Designs which place the, um, garage first and foremost as a, as a, as something sticking out of the house. And I agree with the design review committees. Note that the garage should be pushed back so that it's in the plane of the front facade. Um, I think that the extension of the porch out to there would make it much nicer. Um, we just don't like snout houses and this is not as snout housy as some places, but it's, it's still a snout house.
What's a snat house?
Snout.
Snout, a snout, snout. Pardon my Midwestern accent.
No, but snot is related to snout, so you put your nose forward, is that what you're saying?
The idea of the snout house is that the garage, you know, you can't see my hands because my video is off. The garage sticks out in front of the house and so what you see is the garage. And while you don't quite see the garage on this one like that, I think it's still very prominent.
Brian, bring up the facade.
But I, I do, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I agree, it's, it's setting priority to the car.
Yeah, so I would.
Car lives here, oh, and some people.
Yes, the, the servants to the car. So, um, so those are my concerns and my biggest concern really is, is what the landscaping is looking like. And what, what kind of, what trees are being taken out. And I also want to note that we are now, uh, twenty minutes over allotted time on this. So if the board wants to, um, come to a, some decision.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action, um, with conditions that, um. We, uh, speak with Concom about the wetland.
We or the developer?
That, the developer or the, the applicant.
This, but, so just, just, by law, if they trigger the review by how close they have to file a notice of intent, we don't, that doesn't need to be a, be a condition. Just.
It already exists.
Meaning that if they trigger the, Concom has a very narrow window of, of using Wetlands Protection Act and the River Protection Act. Of, on the local bylaw and the state bylaw for each of those.
Because state mandate for their.
Right, right, so, so it's very clear when there's a note, when they need to do a notice of intent or not. We don't need to say, you, you, if you need to do a notice of intent, you need to file a notice of intent, like that's.
That's.
I don't, it's an unnecessary condition.
Okay, um, so I make a motion that we recommend favorable action with the condition that, um. You sort of, um, not prioritize the garage. Um, and, um, there were some, some comments about just landscaping.
Right, so I'm going to say not prioritize garage by moving it back to the main facade.
Main plane.
Made to the main plane.
Or moving the porch out.
Right.
It was, it was to align, it was to align the facade and the garage.
Yeah, right.
Whatever tools they want to use to just, um, sort of decrease the priority of that.
Okay, so we can say not prioritize garage, E G. By aligning the garage with the main facade, okay? If I get that right, facade. Um, and then, uh, my comment about the landscaping is that the landscaping did not indicate. Trees that were removed.
So existing, uh, okay.
Did not, oh, it actually, you're right, it didn't indicate existing anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it did not indicate existing shrubbery or existing plants. Or removed plants.
So I, I really appreciate what the design review committee said, the proposed plan should be organized to create usable outdoor spaces. And to screen views of neighboring properties nine point five point seven point eleven, citing the zoning bylaw. I mean, the fact is that this does not appear to be a well-considered landscape design. It appears to be what I called before, sort of a color forms approach. And I don't mean to sound completely disdainful, but, you know, the reason we put landscape in our, put shrubs in our landscape. Is to serve a purpose and to bring joy and other things to the landscape and these don't seem purposeful.
Okay, so if there's a condition in there, what would your condition be so that we could, uh, look at it?
Well, Brian, how did I say it in my memo? Thank you for switching screens.
Length, the landscape plan is not meaningful. They said should retain, the condition should retain the services of a licensed LA to design a purposeful and aesthetical rational landscape plan.
Purposeful and aesthetically rational, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we, um. Oh, I need, Brian, could you switch the screen so we could see that? I'm trying to write and I'm afraid my brain isn't remembering what you said. Okay, um, so I think the key is that we should say the landscape plan. Does not appear. To be purposely and aesthetically.
So, Di, 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 we, we have this, we have this on the screen and, and everyone can see it.
I know, but we still need to get the exact wording.
Well, you could say the exact word. Brian, go ahead.
I, see, I don't agree that the, the landscape, the owner needs to get a licensed landscape.
Me either.
I, I, I also, I also agree, it's a question of just, um, we, you don't need to write this down, meaning that the clerk, meaning Sally Dale is here. And has it in front, in front and.
I can relate a reference to landscape architect and I can say the landscape arc, the landscape plan. Needs to reflect a purposeful and aesthetically rational design.
But how do you measure that? I, I, I like the design review commissions, um, note that they should use landscape to shield on the, I think, on the side. Setbacks from the neighbors.
Comment, a number F, to create a usable, to create usable outdoor space.
No, okay, screening, so screen views of neighboring properties. I think that's, that's true, not from it, the inside, but from the outside in. So like, I think that it's the, it's the size setbacks that need more.
So, so, I mean, to move us forward, um, do we simply want to, um, acknowledge that we support what the. DRC has said, or do we want to add words of our own?
Oh, not all of it, no.
Okay, so we, somebody needs to.
So I made a motion already and we were talking about the condition, so the one condition is not prioritize the garage. Second condition is to use landscaping to mitigate, um, views from neighbors. I, I'd say.
Okay, use landscaping to mitigate use of neighbors. Um, that's.
And I would add that, um, that the planning board agrees with condition letter F.
Which is.
But I want to hear, I want to hear Yicheng's view on that. Proposed plans should be organized to create usable outdoor spaces.
And usable to whom? I mean.
Resident.
Well, the resident.
Why is that our, why is that within our purview?
It's not, I'm just, I was adding our endorsement of their view. We don't need to add our endorsement, it's, it's extra, so we don't say it.
I think it's a lot, it's to be that.
Good.
So are we going to, are we going to add the language on the screen in front of us about purposeful and aesthetically rational landscape plan or?
That doesn't make sense to me.
Right, I think that it is not enough well-worded to be substantive guidance to the developer or the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, um, then we have two conditions and I would like to place a note, which isn't a condition. Namely that the landscaping plans do not include existing plants or any trees which were removed. So the motion before us is to, um, endorse favorable action with the condition that. The design not prioritize the garage by, for example, aligning the garage with the main facade. And to use landscaping to mitigate the views of the neighbors.
From the neighbors. Of the, of the neighbors.
Okay, yes, what did I say? I don't know what I said, of the neighbors, okay.
So who's?
Okay, so that's, is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Yicheng Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Give Jarius a three zero. Thank you, everyone who showed up for that one. Uh, we are now going to move on to the next item in our agenda. Which, of course, I can't find the agenda anymore.
Um, so I haven't, yeah, so um, I would, I would suggest uh completely skipping over entirely the design consultants for FY twenty-two only because the half-story definition is extremely important because right now there is a notification in the paper for our public hearing that's taking place on August thirty-first. So this is uh by far takes uh much more precedent over that design consultant uh because this is our last meeting before the hearing. So we have dedicated thirty minutes to this. Um, we um need to come to no absolute conclusions other than this is the draft that we are going to be introducing at the public hearing. We will be taking public comment after that and there could or will be changes. So um.
I, I agree, I agree. I think we can, especially since if we, if we dump design consultant, we're back on schedule.
I agree.
And uh, okay, and I would like to have that design consultant uh conversation when we get Cheryl back with us. So uh, why don't we, why don't, who, either Eicheng or Sally, you want to an idea of what has changed or since our last meeting?
I nominate Eicheng.
Okay, I'll do it. Um, so for the half-story definitions and changes, I want to go to um th- this first part is, is the text. Um, the second page is uh the, the text with the graphics, and I was trying to graph it out so that we could um understand what we're dealing with in two different ones. Um, so the existing language is the half-story, so anything directly under a sloping roof in which the points of intersection of the bottom of the rafters and interior faces of the walls are less than three feet above the floor level and at least two exterior walls. So the wall is less than or equal to three foot feet is right there. And from your really um simple drawing, Diab, um from like the first meeting about this, you know, the, the slope of it could be the, those dotted lines or it could even be tho- those um, the solid lines, and I, I should draw those in dotted lines. I think our vision was that both are in dotted lines as indicating that these are both possibilities or, and there could be many more um within this definition right now. So on the right would be um, you know, the height of the first floor, say, and say this is a one and a half story building, and I, maybe I should do a two and a half story too, just to indicate that it's a house. But um, the first height would be, you know, what I would think that this, our, our text was trying to say um maybe something to that scale, but we have seen um before the board something of a bigger scale, right? Something that was greater than the first floor. So you could use a gambrel roof, you could use, you know, an empire roof, um, anything to achieve that because there is no limit really to, except for the maximum building height um per section four point oh four, but which is like forty feet, right? So um, that's the existing and that's the problem I think we're trying to address. So um, the draft language below, um, if we, you could scroll down a little bit, Brian. Um, is to, so that we, we try to simplify the objectives. We are trying to clarify the dimensional amassing calculations. Um, and also, um, so that's from like an inside-out kind of a thing. Um, but also B is to ensure that there's harmony in scale for, to the surrounding built-in environment. So well, you know, the, the one garage that came before us, um, that was about thirty feet high, you know, the neighbors were extremely distraught. Um, so in, in that, we're trying to figure out ways to um activate this before they have to, you know, um, the neighbors have to get together and fight it or whatever. So, you know, what are, those are our two goals. Um, so the third, the third sheet, if you could scroll down, Brian, is the proposed. Um, so we're keeping the um, the wa- the three-foot wall, anything um less than or equal to um is possible. And what's the first um language here?
So if you go up to page one, Brian, and look at the proposed language.
Okay. So the proposed language was um the bottom of the roof rafters intersect, so that, that's right. And then to the height of the half-story measured from the floor to the exterior ridge line is not greater than the floor-to-floor height of the story directly below. So the maximum that somebody could do would be um, you know, any, that's upper, upper story that is equivalent in height to the lower. So if you have an eight-foot um or nine-foot floor-to-floor um for the first story, the um second or the half-story has to be nine foot from, or less from floor to top of ridge. So we're trying to just limit that height somehow. And then the third one would be the total, so this was in a lot of other towns, just to um kind of restrict what, if you had a gambrel, say, you could have a, almost a hundred percent of your square footage be still by definition a half-story. But if we were to restrict it so that the total floor height that has a clear height of seven feet or more is not more than sixty-five percent, that, that was kind of a, um reading some other towns and their percentages and kind of anticipating what we're trying to propose with the EDUs. Um, sixty-five percent of the total square footage of the floor area of the story directly beneath. So the calculation would be seven feet above, and if you could go to the graph, Brian, um the calculation is seven feet above, you scroll down. And anything like that, so say you had a dormer on the right side, so, and that, that's seven feet. So like, the calculation would be that. And then that'd be the um nominator, and then the denominator would be the floor area of the story directly below it. So say, you know, this is, this is like a historic eighteen ninety house, and they add, made an addition to the back. Um, and, you know, the roof is over the original part, then you would use the calculation um of the entire.
Oh, and we said fifty-five here. I think we meant sixty-five.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. That doesn't, that doesn't um respond.
That's okay.
We're, we're taking, I think we, we landed on sixty-five.
So if, can I butt in real, real quick?
Yeah.
So why did you choose to use the floor below rather than the floor area of the top?
That's so, say in that um example down below, if somebody wants to build another story, half-story on top of the, say, the extension, they could.
Was that your question, Diab?
Um, if they were to build another story on the extension, so you're talking I'm trying to understand where the floor area of the story below is not equivalent to the floor area. The gross floor area, let's call it.
Yeah, let's call it less, less than.
Look at the section, look at the section of the, this thing right here. If you look, so the, the um the roof here area is the, say, the S, the original building, right? And people build out their kitchen, they build out their um primary suite, and that, that is usually the shape that takes um, when that happens. Um, so the half-story then would be that this is the entire, the entire structure is that thing, and then it has to be sixty-five percent of the entire thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand the formula. I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind not limiting it to the floor area.
Hmm, because if you look at this X right here, that is not, that's probably not sixty-five percent.
Oh, I see. What you're saying is that it would actually reduce it too much, so it wouldn't be very usable.
Right.
By giving the, by giving the owner credit for the total floor area of, let's say, the second floor um, to do his calculation of what portion of the half-story at the top could be above seven feet, he gets credit for the entire usable floor area of the second floor.
So let's, let's, let me play devil's advocate, and let's say that your homeowner, she is trying, or your developer is trying to use this in order to create a ginormous second story. Is that possible? We usually end up playing whack-a-mole.
You mean second story or do you mean third story? Because two and a half stories.
Well, I'm trying to understand how this definition can, is, is there a loophole in this definition? Because it's taking the, it's taking a part of the, of the, of the house, or it's the floor, which doesn't have anything to do with the um, the new part, let's say. And so how we're, how, how can we use that in order to get an outcome we don't want?
It's based on the. It's based on the existing footprint though, essentially, right? I mean, I guess it's possible that the second, let's, let's just, I mean, this really, we don't really care about one and a half story buildings in general, to be, to be clear, unless I guess the garage is
Yeah.
that are thirty feet tall.
Yeah.
It, it, with the Y, is it really the total floor area of the story directly below, or could you just say the footprint?
Well, it's a footprint or not, I'm just trying to, I, I'm trying to understand how you can use this in a, in a way in, in to evade what the intent is.
I think the sixty-five percent, or if we want to reduce it, um, that would then um alter the volume of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you're, the, the thing that are going for you, I think, which is going to restrict it is the, you've limited the height, but I have a question about that. And that is that um, Brian, could you bring up Google and, and look at my house? Because I can't think of, um, this is my concern. Is if my house burns down, I want to be able to rebuild it. And twenty-six Canal Street, everyone knows where I live.
The one with the beautiful garden.
Well, that, that, yes, that will survive the burning, but the house probably won't. But my concern is that if you restrict the size of the half-story based on the floor below it.
I'm not seeing it, Brian, it's still working. There we go.
Yeah, so if you just do a street view, oh, there, it's up in the left corner, there you go. If you, I don't know if you can get rid of that, but.
That seems like it would conform.
Well, I can tell you, I'm sitting in my attic right now, and the ceiling is definitely around fourteen feet, maybe twelve. And the floors below me are eight and a half feet.
Right, right, but we said usable space above seven feet.
No, we said floor-to-floor, floor-to-ridge.
You said floor-to-ridge, and I can assure you the floor-to-ridge in here is much bigger than the floor. See, I mean, that's, that's actually a pretty decent shot. You can see that Florida Ridge is much taller than my second or fourth.
Well, so that's a really good point, because aesthetically, I mean, this is a personal opinion, a steeper roof is more aesthetically attractive than a shallow roof.
Uh, okay, but then like you couldn't do like an empire style, um.
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, I don't, I just, you know, I want to make sure that we aren't preventing stu- some styles just because of that.
Right.
I believe it's possible that, I don't know how you change this, I understand what you're getting at, but I think there are particular, I mean, this is a fairly small house. As, before we redid this, the, the uh, the attic, I think we have twelve hundred square feet in the house, so it's a pretty small house. So it's not, so if we're going to try to reduce the massing, then maybe there's another dimension that needs to be added so that you can keep houses maybe of this style with this mass.
So go back to our definition and, and Eicheng, I, I refer us back to a conversation that you and I had, Brian, if you can go back to the diagrams and the text. So when we were talking about what sixty-five percent is compared to, let's scroll to the page below. Eicheng made some excellent plan views right here, up, up. So, and we said that the uh, originally our intention was on the lower part of the screen that X over Y would not be greater than, would be less than or equal to sixty-five percent, but in fact, because we were using this total floor area of the story directly below the top floor. Diab, is your point that it should be the total floor area of the portion of the house directly below?
Well, that's not my concern with rebuilding my house, but um, because this one, that wouldn't affect it.
No, he's talking about height, right, Diab? You're talking about height.
I'm just talking purely about heights.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you scroll up.
Right, it, it makes the roof a little bit squat. I mean, we could, we could adjust that, right, so that the Florida Ridge height doesn't have, doesn't have a, you know, limit. It's just the maximum building height per section four point oh.
I think, yeah, I think that you're, you're sort of, you, there are you've got two constraints. One is the, the seven-foot maximum area, which does limit, you know, if, if we go to the gambrel-style roof in the, in the drawing that you drew up above. Um, I think.
Ninety percent of it.
Yeah, so that would require that you drop the roof in order to get, so that will limit.
Or you, you, you can, like in the drawing that we have here, this is technically a one and a half story house. But if you simply put a floor in at the height of a, you know, nine-foot, eight-foot ceiling, you could have a, an attic story, and then it would be a two and a half story house, which typically you would see in a gambrel.
I know, this is not historically accurate. I'm just saying you could just like tweak the roof shapes and have a giant two, two-story, you know, room, basically.
Right, this is to show the flaws of the existing definition.
Yeah.
And Diab, to your point, um, um, if someone were to use it, now scroll down to the um Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if the limit on the, the, the maximum amount of floor area is sufficient to ma- to keep the height down.
Yeah, I, yes, I, so like this, this roof versus the yard roof, right? Um, on, at twenty-six Canal, the, the difference is in like the degree of slope, right?
Yep, yep.
So I mean, yeah, the Florida Ridge maybe should not exist, and it's just the maximum building height.
I think you're, I think you're, you're, you might be going in the right direction, Eicheng.
Can, can I interject?
Please.
Is everyone looking at, so this obje- the objectives correct of this exercise, right? So I, I'm looking at it, I, I was actually, it was kind of weird because I, I was definite definitely hoping that it would go this direction, because when you look at these objectives and you look at, you can see how intricate that all of these different houses are, the idea is that you don't want to prevent creativity in house construction, and we don't necessarily want the same or specific style. We were really concerned with scale. So when it comes down to it, it's regardless of how many windows you can see vertically, it's how tall is this building? So the idea is exactly what you're talking about, Eicheng, is that looking at these objectives, this is not a new concept for Winchester, forty feet is very high when you look at every other community, period. The idea of having a thirty-six or thirty-seven foot just max height, and it almost doesn't matter what you do underneath. It, it, again, that idea has been floated, but it certainly could enter this conversation. Uh, if you just simply lower that forty to thirty-six, now that's gonna, that's a totally different bylaw, that is not at all actually what's advertised, we don't.
Right, that's the table of conventional requirements, Brian, is that correct?
Correct, correct, but I'm saying is that the idea of um, we don't need the three articles that we have that are potentially to be on town meeting, just because we put them in doesn't mean we have, we have to do it. The idea is if there's a potential to take a step back at this point to potentially looking at, if these actually are the objectives, is this the best tool to, to look at the half-story? Obviously, there's something here. I'm just, what I'm trying to note is that with these objectives, there are clearly other tools that may be more controversial, to be honest. To lowering the height, the total, the maximum height in, in town is something that's not light. Um, but it might be the right tool for the job, uh, rather than, you know, it might be the right tool for the job.
Well, I would, could I address the, the chair? Um, hold on one second, um, and let, let's, let's see how the board feels about opening up the discussion right now.
Um, so can, Diab, can I respond to Brian's?
Yes, please.
So if Brian's touching on something that rushed into my brain when we first started talking about this, which is the interconnectedness of the definition of words like height. which is the interconnectedness of the definition of words like height, and cellar and basement and full story. And when one is considering the objectives that one wants to achieve in the scale and massing of a house, um, it's the proportional-ness of it, and it is very challenging, as, you know, Eching and I have discovered, and as Brian probably already well knows, to put into words what it is we're trying to achieve. Um, so that what happens is that it's possible to punch holes in things until one plugs every hole by experience. So, I'm not sure we're there yet to answer your question, was it Brian's question or Diab's question?
I don't know what the question was.
The question was, is this ready for primetime?
Oh, is that the question?
I, 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 I.
That, that, that wasn't, that was the question for me, is if there's a, if there is a question of potentially taking a step back to use a different tool to attack, attack these objectives, then, you know, I, I, yes. That's, that's part of the, that's why, that's why we're taking the time this evening to talk about this as a board, to, I mean, that's why we're here, we don't need to rush anything, period.
So I have a, I have a very opinionated answer to that question, but I do want to ask the board if they are willing to let, uh, David Feigenbaum address the board at this point.
I, sure.
Okay, go ahead then.
Um, I, I can be brief, I, I feel the discussion that's gone on so far, and my view of what's been done so far, uh, leads me to the conclusion that this is not ready for primetime. And I'm not sure that, and I'm not sure that Brian's proposal is the answer either. I would say to you that this is complicated, it's a very complex issue, because you're trying to deal with aesthetics and, um, size. Um, and you're going to have people gaming whatever you write. Well, they will, and, and the result will be, maybe, in some instances, very unhappy. So, I guess what I would urge is, this is, this is important enough and complex enough that it needs to be thought out carefully, so that you don't end up with unintended consequences. In other words, be careful what you wish for. It just takes, it takes time to, to work something like this out, so that you're confident of what, what you've got. Uh, it seems also likely to, well, I can't speak intelligently about this, but I'll just make the comment, I suspect that if this were presented to the town meeting, there would be so many questions of the kind that have come up tonight, that it, it wouldn't pass. There, there would be too many concerns and questions, so that's what I have to say, thank you for giving me the chance.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to dive in with my opinionated response, which is that, um, I agree that this is, um, will not solve the problem. Um, but we do have, I mean, part of the problem with zoning is that if you wait until you get a perfect response, a lot of things have happened. And facts, and things are built, and you can't unbuild them. So, I think we know that there are current misuses, what I would call a misuse of the definition in order to create structures which are inappropriate and massive. The, the key improvement that I see over the existing bylaw, or I'm sorry, definition, is that this does limit, it puts an actual limit on the usable space in, in the, in this half-story, which we do not have now, and which has led, I believe, to some of the large structures that we're seeing.
We're not limiting space, we're limiting the amount of square footage of, of clear.
That's, yes, that's, I'm, 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 yes, I agree, that's what I attempted to say, yes. The point is, is that by, by the, the way this is limiting the amount of seven foot or greater height, does ensure that we will have smaller half-stories built than we do now. I think that we have to do, my, my point is that there is incremental progress to be made. And if, you know, if we get this all completely worked out in the next two years, we will have two years of developments. And so I think from a zoning perspective, some incremental prosa- progress is better than none. And that's, that's, that's my idea, my, my, my view of it, so.
It feels to me like a, like an, like a sweater with a hole in it, like unraveling, and we're pulling out like the tiniest string and yarn, and it's affecting everything else. But maybe Brian's point is that, maybe there's a, there's another strand that would be more effective at just, you know, redoing it, right? Cause I, I agree with you, Diab, that this is incremental, and it's starting to affect a lot of things, we were talk, thinking about the sixty-five percent, say, if like we'd, we wanted ADUs in the future, how does that affect it, where is, you know, is that, is that usable enough? Um, or height, as you said, Brian, and we were talking about like fourteen feet as a max floor to floor height, but then if you count that, fourteen plus fourteen plus fourteen is, is, what is that, thirty?
It's forty-two.
Forty-two.
We took that out of, we took this, that out of this language.
Right.
I mean, so I, my, I, from my perspective, the thing that makes this the most problematic is the, the limit on the height of the half-story relative to the stories.
Brian, can you scroll to the diagrams that Eching so expertly crafted? Thank you. So what Eching said was that Z on the second floor is the floor to hor- floor height of the story be- below.
The top floor. So Z equals floor to floor height of, of the story below the top floor. Wait.
I don't think that's right. Uh, uh, Z is the floor to floor height, I think the Z.
Of the second story, say, that's, we should just say second story, right? And then the Florida Ridge height should be less than or equal to Z.
Right.
And this is to scale, I just did fourteen, fourteen, fourteen.
So, and, and, so now, this is an interesting case, because Diab's house is aesthetically very pleasing. And one reason that it's aesthetically pleasing is because it has that wonderful steep attic story. And so when one raises the ridge height, and we're still staying within the maximum building height per section four point O, um, it, it makes a, I'm going to use the subjective word, um, a quinter, um, look at a house, it's, 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 it's human scaled, and one of the reasons it's human scaled is because when you raise the, the, the slope of the roof, you raise the ridge, and you're still working within the forty feet, so it squishes down the ceiling height. And when you, not squish, but we, when you reduce ceiling height from fourteen to eleven to ten to nine and a half to eight, or whatever it is, you begin to get into more human scaled buildings. And I think a lot of what the town is struggling with right now is, um, what we would call, you know, this McMansions, this modern scale, where everything must be oversized and grand. And it puts the rest of the neighborhood, um, to, e- e- either the new structure looks disproportionate to the neighborhood, or the neighborhood just looks like disproportionate to the new structure, whichever. And one way to control that is to control building height, and if we wish, as a planning board, to allow people who have existing homes but want to expand their living space into the third floor, but without making it look like a triple decker, okay? We're trying to enforce the notion of a sloped roof. And how shall we do so in such a way that it retains the scale and character of the house? Um, um, uh, period.
Right, so I, unfortunately, I dropped out for a bit there. I just want, I just want to, um, I think, I think that, that we need, there's, uh, I mean, a- as everyone has pointed out so far, we are tugging on strands, we are unraveling sweaters. Um, and, and the, the, what you just posed, Sally, is a design consideration in terms of, so we have to weigh, do we want to prescribe certain types of designs? Or do we want to create a, an envelope within pe- which people can experiment with different designs? But the envelope creates a massing and a scale. And, and that's the difficult thing, because, you know, I'm a big fan of modern architecture, which doesn't at all look like my house. I think you can design beautiful, human scaled, modern architecture. I don't want our zoning to prohibit interesting ways of creating homes, so there's a real tension here. And so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think that to take Brian's point of, let's, I mean, one of the things we can do next, say for spring, or the next time we feel brave and bold, is to discuss limits on building height. But we are going to be talking about ADUs in the near future, and we're going to have to, I think that discussion will bring in how we're going to handle more complex. There will be more complex structures, because you're going to be adding smaller units or whatever. So I think there is a fuller discussion to be had of that. Which I don't think we can get to in this proposal. I think that there is a part of this proposal which, I won't use the word salvageable, but I think we can move forward with, and, and just in terms of trying to put a Band-Aid on something that we know is happening now. And, and, uh, that's, and that is.
Can you characterize what we know is happening now? It's helpful.
The, what we know is happening now is people are using the half-story definition as it currently exists to build very large half-stories, which are out of scale, because they're able to essentially create this, this ginormous attic.
As long as it's within the maximum building height is specified in dimensional requirement.
So, Diab, I also think that this is salvageable too, I think that if we struck, um, the, the floor to ridge line, then it would then allow for creativity in, in roof design, right? But the sixty-five percent, I think then reduces what you're, you're talking about, where like, basically anything just under a slight slope would be counted as a half-story, right? So.
Well, as long as it's over second, over sec- oh, ha- under a slope is a half-story. But, you know, people could put a one, a two percent slope, and it looks like a triple decker.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so then we, the sixty-five percent then restricts that.
Oh, I see.
I think, I think one thing we could do is why don't we, um, actually design a sixty-five percent? Let's, let's start out with the maximum floor area possible for the floor below, which is a rectangle, let's just say a rectangle right underneath this half-story.
So scroll up, Brian.
Just so, so, you know, we've got, we want to have, you know, there, there's two angles, and we want something below sixty-five percent, which it has to be below seven feet. And so I can sit down and do the calculation of how, what is the maximum slope you can have if you want to limit the seven foot or above to sixty-five percent of the footprint of the floor, I can do that, I will not do that now, because I can't do math on the, on the, but that would give us an idea of what the maximum slope is.
Yeah, I, I can hack it graphically too, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. And you just want to hack it to see what the extremes are, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, and that's what, what visually people want to see, they want to understand what the extremes are. Um, you know, what, what happens when you have someone who puts in, you know, a, a half-story with, you know, all sorts of, you know, ins and outs and sideways on the, I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm sure.
Well, it's very common now in newer homes, and certainly in pre-existing homes from the late, um, uh, what would it be, eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds? That there are lots of dormers and gables and ins and outs, and, and complexity to the framing structure of the roof. And when you do that, it adds complexity to the calculation. Um, more contemporary construction is somewhat simpler in its core framing, but more complex in its, um, uh, what I, what would I call it, facade framing, you know, gables within gables within gables, that kind of thing. But I think the principle that you're coming to is define two parameters, not three. And if we were to define two parameters, not three, it would be to say, this is the maximum height of the building for this zone. Um, and the building shall be two and a half stories, and the maximum height for this zone is this, and the building may not exceed three and a half stories, for instance, as we move to portions of possible ni- main street locations, but regardless, the definition of a half-story continues to be that portion of an area that is below a half, excuse me, excuse me, below a sloped roof. And as long as the area below the sloped roof that has a seven feet clear headroom or more, does not exceed sixty-five percent of the floor area of the story immediately below it.
Well, that is, you know, that, I think, um, if we're, if we're gonna, I think, uh, we, we shall, we shall see how that, um, applies to.
Everything.
Yeah, I mean, that would be interesting, I don't know if, 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 how that affects commercial buildings. Um, so those are, those are different, um. I, I don't know enough about commercial architecture to understand what sort of limitation that puts on unbuildable, you know, things, so.
So, a- again, it's really important that we keep our, our eye on the prize, which is the objectives, and understand that describing outcome in words that aligns with diagrams and that doesn't, um, trip up conflated definitions is really, really tricky, and um, it's, staying close to our goals is really important.
So, um, let me just, uh, try to find my, so we are, we have, um, just trying to keep us on schedule, we, we have to make a decision as to, Brian, what decision do we have to make tonight, please remind me?
Um, it, it's simply, um, what are we presenting? I mean, if it, um, you know, what are we presenting on the thirty-first? Um, today was the first day that, uh, the notification went in the paper saying that we're having a hearing on our zoning articles for fall town meeting. Um, so, at this time, we have to, uh, so this would be current draft as is right now. If someone asked for the current draft of, of the, our zoning articles, this is what I would give them. So what we, what would we, what we would be deciding tonight is, if there are any edits, uh, we, we, we could, we would make those, and then that's what we would be, um, introducing, uh, on the thirty-first.
So I would.
So as a, sorry, 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 go right ahead, Diab, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just have the habit of doing that, and I apologize. Um, what I would suggest, I would be comfortable if we, um, took the proposed new language and we struck number two in the definition of story half or half-story. And I have no idea what page you would find that on.
There we go, number two being the height of the half-story measured from the floor to the exterior ridge line is not greater than the floor to floor height of the story below.
That's.
This is where I was getting to, you're specifying more things than perhaps we need to, given the table of dimensions?
I think that this is the, this is the one, um, constraint, which I think, um, I'm uncomfortable with, and I, I would personally would not support, but I would support the other two.
So, and that's really interesting, Diab, because if we think about the, sort of the, the trigger case study, it was a one and a half story garage, where the second, or the half-story of the garage was greater in height than the automobile story of the garage. And the abutters objected to what appeared to be an oversized height.
Yeah, but Sally, I think the sixty-five percent would have taken that down, if we had that sixty-five percent. Yeah, but Sally, I think the sixty five percent would have taken that down. If we had that sixty five percent there. The it it couldn't have been thirty feet.
Okay, that's that's a good, see, this is what I'm saying about, talk about two things, not three.
Yeah, so I would, I is, I I don't know how the board feels about this, but do we want to?
I agree that um number two restricts the stylistic. Um, possibilities, um, and it it's a little bit. Too, too prescriptive there. Um, but with one and three. Possibly we could get where we want to, and I can try to hack it and graphically. Um. You know, if you go to the gambrel roof line, I would add another floor so that we're really talking about two and a half. We were talking about house, not a garage anymore. Right? And just show the. Um, what we're dealing with there and what what we're trying to solve. Um. And then for the, you know, the section. I think the calculation of the sixty five percent will be problematic too, in that people will be asking why. Um.
Well, the reason why is because we don't want the roof to become so flat. That it looks like a three story flat roofed building.
But I think the question is, where where does the sixty five percent come from?
Oh, no, my question was how it's calculated. Where what you were saying, the floor in question. Um, is the numerator and the floor below or the footprint of the house is at is the denominator.
But it's very generous of us to give the um.
A greater denominator.
The the greater denominator, which is to say. The story directly below the top floor as opposed to the portion of the structure that is directly below the top floor.
I would, I would just say the footprint of the half floor is the simplest thing to think about.
But then that would restrict your usable space to very little. Unless we bumped up to sixty five percent.
The number, the number would have to be, the number would have to be different.
Um, what does footprint mean? The footprint of the what?
The perimeter.
The house.
Well.
That's what we're doing now. That's the footprint of the house.
Yeah, right now, it's this, it's the, it's whatever the footprint of the is of, sorry, it's the second story.
So here's my concern, and I'm going to turn my video back on. So, um. You can see the angle in my 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 attic in which I'm at. So you can see that it comes down pretty steeply. But the fact is, quite a bit of it is usable because I'm six feet tall. And, you know, between me and the other wall, there's a good eight some feet. I think that the concept of usable space or habitable space where we talk about headspace. Does not take into account that you still have available use in the parts that are less than seven feet.
That's right. That's that's why we called it clear height and clear height, meaning from where your feet are to where your head is or to where, yeah.
Yeah, so my, you're talking about living space, by the way, just in terms of the the words, that, yeah, the word you're talking about is living, living space.
We don't want to call it habitable because it might be uninsulated and purely storage.
I'm just talking about the definite definition.
Yeah, so I'm all, what I'm saying though is that. It is still. It is still a perfectly usable space, even if some of it is less than seven feet.
You're advocating for a smaller percentage or a smaller calculation, smaller denominator.
I'm saying, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to underst- your your comment each thing about which side, where the, you know. Putting in a smaller denominator does reduce the amount of seven foot. Or more space, but it, but one can't look at that space alone to determine whether the space is usable.
Right, right, no, but we're not talking about, we're kind of trying to do it from the outside in. We're trying to see it from the street and we don't want to see. Gigantic buildings, right? I think that's.
Yeah, so I would, um.
And we don't want to see flat roofs.
Right, so I I I, well, we won't get flat roofs if we make a smaller. I mean, the 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 smaller area you allow, the steeper the roof you get.
Right.
Or something like that.
Well, that is true to the extent that people, no, this is very good. This is where push pull comes. To the extent that people are willing to have a slightly lower. Floor to floor height on the first and second floor, they can have a flight slightly higher.
We're striking, we're striking that.
We're striking that. So I think the, here's, here's what I would imagine.
Overall building height. No, we're not.
Yeah, the forty feet is really, really high.
So so I would, I would, I would suggest that maybe the way forward with this is to, um. So we're we're still ambivalent about whether it should be. Why should be from the story below or from the footprint of the half story? Um, so maybe.
That's what you meant by footprint. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so so we have, um, we have two footprints in front of us. Which one do we choose as the denominator? And the question is, if we, if we, if we limit it to the half floor. It will reduce the amount of space that's available. But how much will it do so? And I think that's, that's a calculation that can be done. And then we just need to say, okay, um, if I want to increase the amount of of space. In the half story by, say, using a larger footprint from the floor below. How big can I go before I run into?
A flat roof.
Forty, the forty foot limit.
Right, is, so in many towns, and Yicheng helped me with this, but because Yicheng and I did a review of definitions from. Neighboring and peer communities and some of them speak, and this is where you get into hybrid zoning code. Um, Brian, help me with that, but some of them speak of roof pitch. Right?
Yes.
So a steeper roof. Means that you have. If you want more floor area in the half story. You need to have the floor of that steeper roof moved down. And if you want to do that, and you're still working within your your forty feet. You need to have a a lower ceiling on your second floor. And a lower ceiling on your first floor. You like my little pantomime here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the only thing is, Sally, forty feet gives you an awful lot of wiggle room. That's the problem.
You're saying that's a very tall building?
Yeah.
So, Brian, table of dimensions, section four, what does it say?
Forty feet.
What what do you want to know?
Forty feet.
Want to know the maximum height of a two and a half story building in Winchester?
It's forty feet, all the residential zones are are forty, are forty feet.
And it's been that way for a while?
Very, very long time.
And, dear, are you saying that that's a lot?
It is. Regardless of what, I'll 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 say, yeah, if you if you look at it. Just plainly, you we we tend to look at the the zoning bylaws of Lexington, Concord, Belmont.
Well, do you think that's why we have McMansionization in our town?
That's what Brian was saying. We could pull that lever and say, hey, can we just reduce that?
Yeah, there there's no doubt that we have the highest. Uh, well, yeah, there's no doubt we have the highest and maximum height to the comparable towns that we uh look at zoning bylaws.
Okay, so that's really interesting because one of the things that one of the members of the public brought up in our previous meeting. Was that there is an open appeal with regards to building height. And that is um based on an interpretation of current definition of as right. And so I return to that question of whether this is a timely or an untimely discussion.
I I think that is, I think it's timeline. I think it's a separate issue.
Yeah, we're not going to wait two years for, we're not going to base decisions on a case that that the kite, a case might take two years to solve or.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we are not, we are not impacting that case because that case is. It's based on existing zoning. If we change the zoning, it doesn't change anything about that case.
Okay, so that's really helpful because that that basically sets aside that concern.
Yeah.
Whatever discussion, it's based on zoning in place at the time.
Right, so I want to remind us um that we are now um twenty minutes past the end of discussion on this. So I would, can we, can we, um, I don't, why don't we make a motion just to make this final? That we are going to present this draft with the. Amendment that we strike number two in the story. Half or half story definition.
And then can we also amend it to um adjust the graphics accordingly?
Yes. I believe that is appropriate.
Okay.
So shall I say so moved?
Somebody say so moved.
Um, um, I want to hear Yicheng say it.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, Sally, do we have a second?
Architect. Yes, second.
Okay, then I said it now. We call the, uh, roll call vote, please. Uh, Yicheng, Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
The adjurious, aye. So this is what we are going to be presenting on this. At the um, at the uh, the hearing on the thirty first. Brian, I presume that the language for the floodplain stuff.
Yeah, I, well, so that's that, that's something that the engineer and legal counsel and I are meeting this week on. Uh, we're going to uh basically make sure that our current bylaw is going to uh mesh with the the new guidelines. Uh, this is a normal thing that um many communities are doing because the new FEMA uh maps. And regulation, not maps, but the regulations uh were with, that we're referencing came out. Um, the only other thing that is currently, I wanted to get this up. Um, and I I know that, uh, so this is super timely uh in terms of why I'm doing this. What um should be looking at the notice. So you can see that we, one was the floodplain overlay district to reference the the um uh N S I P regs. Half story was the one we're talking about right now, which are going to be amended as as we just talked about. And this third. Uh, this was uh thrown in in order to have it potentially be talked about. But we frankly didn't have any time to talk about it in the agenda. This this time or have anything circulated in terms of if any board members wanted.
Well, I'm, I meant to type up my really complex and sophisticated analysis.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is that um there's, there is currently right now, no. Nothing before the planning board that we can put out uh as part of a draft language for this potential third amendment. Uh, this is not something that we have talked about. Um, and it did not, it did not, um.
Where did this come from? Where'd it come from, Brian?
So we, uh, the chair had put this in there. I don't know how many weeks ago this was, dear. Um, and it was, it was um two and a half weeks ago, something like this. And it was a, it was a placeholder. Yeah.
Yeah, so this, this start, yeah, so pardon me, my, I, I'm going to turn my video off because once again, my connection is lousy. Um, so this came about because in the um six fifty four Main Street Fells Hardware. Um, lot, one, the side lot on Vine Street is. There's a, there's a shared. Boundary, what is, is it fifty nine Vine? I forget which one it is. Um, the part, the point is, is that the commercial building has zero setback from the residential zone. And I think that's a.
So this is what I, this is what I was looking up. This is my fancy table. In the central business district in the east core, the setback. Um, for the CBD side yard is zero feet for east core or five feet if bordering a historical structure. Um, and it's similarly for the town common core, the museum core and the northern core. Nowhere does it say or five feet if bordering another district. And I think that's what we were talking about.
Right, so the the, what I was hoping that we would be able to do is simply to assess. Whether there is another property which could be impacted by the zero setback.
Wait, 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 sorry, I have to cut it off here, guys. Uh, we cannot, uh, this is not an agenda item, um.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right. It is not.
So we, we, uh, you know, full stop.
Yep, full stop, okay. So we can't talk about this, so. Uh, I think it really comes down to, we just don't have anything to say about it. Thank you, Brian, for pointing out that.
Thank you, Brian.
So, uh, I guess we will show up on August thirty first with nothing to say about number three.
Well, it might be a good, yeah, we can obviously make a vote, but at the beginning of that, at the beginning of that hearing, we could make a vote to pull to, you know, we don't have any of the draft language, so it's very clear what we're going to be doing. Uh, at that time, we have nothing to present, we're pulling the article.
Unless we want to meet on the twenty fourth.
We couldn't, with that, it's, okay, so I'm sorry, you are correct, Sally, we could, we could do another meeting if we are serious about that. Um, but at the moment, there's, there's, there's nothing to talk about, uh. In terms of.
So what what I will say i- in in defense of this issue, whether we address it on the twenty fourth and the thirty first or later. Is that one thing I realized about the six fifty four Main Street project. Is that the east core of the CBD is one of the few places in the CBD that comes right up against.
Sally, Sally, so we cannot, we cannot talk about.
Can't discuss it. You're right, my my apologies, thank you.
So then, I want to make it clear, I want to make it clear why we can't discuss it, because if it, we're, we're, we're talking about the the merits of the zoning in a specific location that was. Under the result of a, of an appeal and the idea is that people might want to. If they knew that we were going to be talking about it, they would want to be here and be able to comment, so.
You are most correct. Thank you, Brian.
So, but uh, the one thing I will say is that we can talk about scheduling. So it doesn't matter, we can talk online, offline, that's one thing that's not covered under open meeting law. So we can certainly at any time talk about scheduling an item next on our agenda, so that is something that we can do right now. But we need to make that decision. Uh, this did creep up on us at period. Uh, we just. It it's taking longer to get through things per the normal. There's nothing new about that. Um, it it, they say, uh, zoning bylaw changes take time. Um, the point is that we do need to decide if we are going to be moving forward, if we're going to be meeting before the thirty first.
Um, I. I'm ambivalent. Um, we can, we can do a poll offline to see if anyone is is available. I don't want to do this without having Cheryl in on the discussion.
Correct.
Issue, so.
Okay, I will send it, I will send a doodle poll out tomorrow about a potential meeting, um, next, uh, you know, potential Zoom next week in the evening on, you know, on.
Right, so we would have to, we would have to, um, the notice for that hearing would probably have to be available, go out Wednesday at noon. That's what our usual, that's what our usual deadline is.
Yeah.
And that's tomorrow.
Correct.
So, so why don't we, why don't we see what's possible, um. We'll send out the poll. If we don't get enough replies by Wednesday, then we can't do it. So that's just the way it is.
So that's what it is, is that, so Wednesday at noon for something to occur on a Tuesday the next.
Typically, so typically that is what the, what the clerk would want would be to, yes, post a meeting. Um, on, or send it to, send it to the clerk's office, the agenda that is. Uh, we don't not, not supporting documents, simply an agenda, and the agenda could simply be town meeting articles, so we can easily post this meeting in five seconds. Um, it's not a a large problem. It's a question, really, when it comes down to is, can we meet on the twenty fourth next week?
And that shall be determined by an email poll?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it that way because I want to include Cheryl in on this. I can make the twenty fourth, I believe. I mean, if the rest of you, if if one person here says no, then we definitely need Cheryl to be there. Um, if, you know.
I can be there.
Um, I don't know if there's anything happening in the town on the twenty fourth. Uh, or I'm sorry, not the twen- is it the twen- it is the twenty fourth. Oh, wait a second.
Yes, it's Tuesday, the twenty fourth, a week before the thirty first.
Yeah, um.
We do this offline?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do this offline, okay.
Good eating.
So let us, um, thank you, Brian, for keeping us honest. Um, let us move on now to, um. I suggest we, um, well, we have a choice. We can talk further about the impact or we can go into working groups. Um, oh, the the idea behind the working groups was to start um reaching out to other. Um, boards and commissions and groups around town to start making some moves to think about what, for instance. ADU zoning would look like. So this is a long term prospect, so it's not something we need to do this evening. Um, the same with the project management working group, that's something that I wanted, um, Cheryl had some insights. I was hoping she'd be able to come along on that, so we could postpone that until a later date. The ADU one, we're net, we're, if we're going to be looking at ADU zoning, the, just to talk about scheduling, that is certainly not going to come up before next fall. We have a lot on our, so I would suggest we could put that one off, and then we could devote the rest of our time to just talking, finishing off the master plan implementation committee implementation, which I think we were very close to finishing. So how does the board feel?
I concur.
I'm okay with that, but I think Cheryl had some friction with some of the things.
In the implementation committee?
Yeah, I, she had some points to make, so I, I don't know, we can, we can continue, I, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, let's, I mean, I think the language was, and I think that we can pull it out of our meeting minutes.
Well, also, I think it was in our packet that, that I had done what I said I would do, which is that I rephrased the first three paragraphs, and I put in notation, the three paragraphs below reflect edits discussed at the August third twenty twenty one Planning Board meeting, paragraph, 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 and then I said, the rest of this document will be further discussed at the August seventeenth twenty one Planning Board, and there was duties, these are the sections, duties, size, members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Master Plan Selection Committee, duties, membership, and resources.
Yeah, my, and I don't want to put words in Cheryl's mouth, but my understanding was that her concerns were mostly with the first section and not necessarily with the duties, although I know that she was. I think we can, I mean, I, I, I agree, we need to have her around, I'm, I'm just hoping that the, the things that I. Yeah.
Well, one solution would be for us to proceed with discussion of duties, size, members of the MPIC terms, I skipped, sorry, and the selection committee duties and membership and resources, and consider that a discussion pending further confirmation by the full membership of the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I think I really want to get this done, I think, I think, oh, I should note, I'm sorry, as a sidebar, I'm scheduling a meeting with town moderator to discuss with her if we do want to go with the standing meeting of town, standing committee of town meeting, what are the steps that should be taken to do that, so that.
Great.
Wouldn't get there, so that's going to happen hopefully next week, Brian and I will meet with the town moderator.
Well, I'm in favor, because the time right now is, is, we have eighteen, seventeen minutes till close.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of getting this done, too, it's been on our agenda for so long.
Yeah, I think it is really close, I think the biggest concern, and again, this is the concern that was, that came up in my discussions with Susan Verdict, the Chair of the Select Board, was the size of the committee in terms of nine members being too large. And we've, we've retained the language that, or maybe, I'm sorry, why don't we do duties first, I'm skipping ahead, I apologize.
I think you're right, Dan.
But let's go through duties and make sure that, I mean, I I believe, I mean, I would, I would, you know, there's some editing I would do here, just because I think there's some, some, some repetition that I think we can remove, I, I don't think that we have to keep calling it the twenty thirty plan, because we know, so for instance, in number one, I would say implementing strategies described in the action plan, because that's.
Good, so take out the words the sixty five and take out the word thirty.
Yeah, I think there's just, there's, you know, the, the wording has come in together from a variety of sources, I think most of it is your Sally's, but just in terms of tightening it up a bit, I think that we need to offer recommendation, I think there's a, a word choice in terms of recommendation is, you know, one of the things I think that was brought up by Cheryl was that we are, we are really in, this would be an advisory, so I, I want to make sure the wording is reflecting that.
But you don't want it to be a dictatorial thing, so would you like to say suggest?
I think suggest might be a, yeah, I think suggest is a good way of putting it, I don't know.
Where are you with that? So to collaborate with advise and support with research and advocacy, and to suggest actions to responsible parties.
Okay, I mean, do you, do you find the balance, is there a real difference in your mind between recommending and suggest?
No, 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 no.
Okay, well, why don't we just leave it at recommend, I take Brian, Brian is very, I, I, I take his, his advice.
Well said, Brian.
I will, I will take that, I, I must get a glass of wine. Back in about thirty five seconds.
I would suggest that.
We were, we were, we were, we will put in all sorts of stuff that you have nothing, you know, nothing about in here, okay.
Okay, good, we're going to take out the sixty five and twenty thirty to keep it concise.
Yeah.
Okay, good, carry on.
So, I mean, identifying necessary steps to successfully implement, employing, implementing the work plan, so this is.
Wait, where are you?
I'm, I'm, I'm moving, I'm on, I'm sorry.
On the second page?
Yeah, I've already, I think that everything is.
Oh, the top of the second page, I see it, identifying the necessary steps, suggesting or recommending necessary steps.
I, I think identifying is because you've added, you, you, this is a subsection of the, the, this section starts to advise.
Right, right, right.
Though identifying is fine, implementing the work plan is, I think, something that, I don't know what that means.
So to advise the responsible parties as needed on implementing the work plan, it's simply to say that, that, you know, every board and committee in town is tasked according to our twenty thirty master plan, implement, the action plan, with all kinds of work to do. And the goal of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is just to see, just to make sure that they nudge along all this good work across all these different boards and committees to achieve our goals by year ten, which is now year nine, right? And so if we are advising responsible parties as needed on, move to the page two, Brian's second bullet, implementing the work plan over the required months, seasons, and years, it's simply weighing in with, it occurs to us that dot, dot, dot.
So that's, okay.
Yeah, it's just advising, like, we really scaled back the language because we didn't want it to be autocratic or dictatorial.
Yes, but I, I still, I, I, I'm still getting that feeling here, because essentially, we're going to tell, say, we're going to give you advice on how you schedule your work. And I think that's the part which I think is, will, we don't want to tell them how to do their work.
Well, so say we had X committee that was a responsible party for a particular strategy of the master plan, and it just seemed like it was really lagging, and they were really focused on other stuff and not focusing on the master plan objectives. Would it be the role of the Master Plan Implementation Committee to call that to their attention?
It, it, typically, it's a reporting, more of a reporting agency, so maybe they wouldn't.
No nudging then, just, just stick to the fact.
Well, I mean, I would imagine there's probably some courtesy, i- it's more, you know, but I generally, yeah, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't know. To be honest, it probably depends solely on personnel in terms of how much nudging is actually going to be doing it, meaning, meaning who are the people that are on this committee? And how serious are they about nudging certain departments to do certain things, right?
So instead of implementing, to advise the responsible parties as needed on the work plan.
I, I think that what we can do is to, so what we want to do is keep them abreast of what's happening and the progress on the master plan. And so if we keep them abreast of the progress and the places where there are no progress, I think that would be, I mean, that would be a nudge, but it would also mean that we're not really telling them what to do or how to structure their things, but we're giving them, you know, this is the big picture, things are moving here, things are not moving here, they could identify themselves as to whether, you know, I mean, I, I just.
So the Master Planning Implementation Committee is largely a reporting entity, if we go back to the the mission, the, the mission is to ensure through these various methods that the whole idea of the master plan occurs by June thirtieth, okay? And, and the master plan going up to the second paragraph will share the committee's advice and recommendations with those commissions, et cetera, that are named in the master plan as the primary and supporting responsible parties. And at Winchester Town Meetings in the fall and spring, so that the town meeting members can take our advice, the advice of the Master Plan Implementation Committee into consideration when debating Warren articles that would move this forward, so when we get down to duties, and now they're back in the background talking to the responsible parties, and they're saying on the second bullet, um, no, we're not saying on the second bullet, we're saying on the second bullet, right, identifying, no.
Implementing the work plan, and so, yeah, so I would be more comfortable with, instead of using the words implementing the work plan, we keep them abreast of the overall schedule or, or the progress of the implementation.
So is it to comment on their progress or to, to make notes?
To provide them with information about the progress.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the work plan workers know their own?
But they're not working, their, their work, if we were to ask historical commission, let's say, of what their work plan is relative to the master plan, they have none. Right, their, their work plan is, how do we deal with, I mean, if my concern is that we're going to come in and say, we're going to help you with your work plan for the master plan, and they're going to say.
Get out of my lane.
Yeah, this is our stuff, what we can.
So perhaps we're advising on the progress towards.
Yes.
Advise them on their assessment of the progress.
I, I think we can.
It's more of a reporting agents, it's more of a reporting to the select board and to the planning board and to town meeting, those are, those are kind of the audiences.
Yeah, but we are, we are, we are trying to get this committee to work, to collaborate with the other, with these other parties. So the definition of how we collaborate is, I think, what comes in here.
I think the fourth bullet under duties might be that we're discussing taking that entire fourth bullet out.
I disagree.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I think there has to be, there has to be some discussion between the implementation committee and the other, on these other parties, because it's supposed to be partly, I mean, we, if all they do is do a report drop at town meeting, then it just becomes a committee that no one has any interest in, in dealing with, there has to be interaction, and this, I think, is how we define what the interaction is between this committee and the others.
So perhaps the word advise is overly top-down? Is that, is that where we would?
I don't, I don't have a problem with the word advise, I simply have a problem with the points in implementing the work plan.
Well, all we're doing is advising them on.
What about collaborate, if you want to, back and forth?
So why don't we say collaborate with the responsible parties as needed on prioritizing goals, like identifying necessary steps?
Collabor, well, if we're collaborating on implementing, that means that we actually might have some action items, we're not.
Yeah, and I, I don't, and I, I think the, well, I just, the word implementing, I feel, is, is too intrusive.
Right, so let's talk about what we were, what I was trying to say there, that's very helpful, this is really good, this is a good drill down, to advise the responsible parties as needed on, that's why I was going back to their assessment of, go ahead, Dan.
See, I think if we're, see, if we're going to advise them on their assessment of their progress.
No, it's, it's the commit, it's the implementation committee's assessment of the responsible party's progress.
So then all of us, yeah, so there, all of a sudden, we've now got a committee saying, all of a sudden, we now have a, someone who's, who's trying to take oversight over our work.
Right, right, you're taking too long, you're not paying attention, you're gonna, you're never going to make your deadline, et cetera.
And I don't think that's.
Who needs that, who needs that?
That's why I think if we simply give them an idea of the overall progress, and maybe, again, what Brian is saying, maybe we remove this line, and we just put that into the report.
That's a good suggestion, Brian, are you still there, Brian?
Right here.
Hi, hi, so we just take out that bullet.
I mean, I think that is, you know, move, move that, that's going to be in the report. So we haven't described what the reports will say. So if we, what, what are going to be in the report, so the report.
Well, on the advisory role, let's stick to that for now.
Okay, well, I just don't want us to lose this line.
No.
We just want to move that line to another section.
It's the selection, well, then it would go to page one. And it would go to the second bullet of the second paragraph. Will share the committee's advice and recommendations at Winchester's Fall and Spring Town Meeting.
Yes, but I actually think that it goes into, on the second page, the last bullet to prepare and present with.
Oh, I see, excellent, good, thank you.
So let's not lose it, let's put it there.
Okay.
Okay, and then updating strategies in response to, and so now we're getting to the last of the sub bullets there, sorry, Brian, you've gone too far.
Page one, no, page two.
Just to the top, stop, scroll down two lines, please, there we go, so we're at the last of the open bullets or the open circles, so updating strategies in response to shifting outside circumstances, I think we can delete the last phrase on that, because that is obviously, I think it's redundant.
Good, I, I agree, just keep it tight.
I think the next one helps secure necessary funding, I think from all possible sources is, I don't think that we need to, we're, we're just, just secure the necessary funding.
Okay, delete from all possible sources.
To ensure the implementation of, now, this is, I mean, we could say the strategies.
The strategies, I agree with you.
Okay. Development document metrics, I think that's, that's, that's fine, and then we have here, and maybe this already accommodates, so the question is, so they're going to do reports, what are those reports going to have in them? And so we have activities, progress, achievements, obstacles, so that does, and I want to make sure we don't lose the, that item that we just excised, implementing the work plan.
Well, so is, is the work plan included in the word activities?
Well, I think it's included in activities and progress, the question is, do we need to be more specific? Do we have to say things like, in this report, we find that, you know, very few committees are actually, have, have integrated the master plan strategies into their outlook, and therefore, things are slipping, is this, so that would be sort of a work plan thing as to say, I mean, so maybe that's all, yeah.
I think that, that the fourth bullet to prepare and present with those four things, activities, project achievements, progress, achievements, and obstacles, makes unnecessary the bullet that we were going to move down.
Okay.
Because, you know, the work plan is a really drill-down thing.
Yeah, and that's something that we, we just don't have.
There's enough personalities, and there's enough accountability, and there's enough, you know, talent in all of our volunteer boards.
So why don't we? So why don't we, okay, so we'll leave the, the, the first line, um, to prepare and represent. Um, we can, we can lead related to implementation of the twenty-thirty action plan. I think that's implicit in this document. Um.
So I, this, they're reporting quarterly to the planning board, so September, so they're reporting quarterly to the planning board and twice a year to town meeting. Does that feel onerous?
I would say that the report to town meeting could take place of one of the reports to the planning board. And they would be occurring at the same time.
Cause otherwise you're. Yeah, I think generally reporting twice a year is, is fine.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm gonna take out the second bullet.
Well, I, I think that having a, a, I think a quarterly report, but I think the ones that, the, the ones in between town meetings could be much less formal. It's not like, it's more like an update.
All right, so let's just leave it the way it is and let people kind of.
Well, I.
That constitutes a report.
Well, if we leave it like it is, then that means that they actually have to perform six reports.
Oh, I see, because spring is May and fall is November. Is that right, Brian? For town meeting?
Yeah, May and November.
So why don't we say, reporting quarterly in, in August, November?
I, I would, I would say, I would say that we.
February and May.
I would say that we keep the first bullet because I think that we need to, it really is, they do need to report to town meeting.
That's exactly right.
And then we, we say, um, and, um, we do something else with the planning board, um.
Additionally, reporting in November, I, no, excuse me, additionally, reporting in August and February to the planning board.
Yeah, um, and I, I don't know if the word reporting is the right way I would. I mean, a reporting implies that they're gonna make a presentation or have a document.
Updating.
Um, updating, um, what is?
Commenting?
Providing, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the right word is. Um, updating, it seems, um.
Well, it does say to prepare and present reports on activities, progress, achievements and obstacles. And you would do that twice a year in May and November at town meeting. And then you would do it two more times a year in August and February to the planning board.
Yeah, okay, so we can, we can, um, just remove the word report from each of those two sentences, cause.
That's true.
And then we'll just have biannually at spring and fall town meeting and, uh, August and whatever the other day.
February, August and February to the.
To the planning board. Okay.
Okay, that's good. That keeps things lighter.
So the question.
Yeah, could, could I make a motion for you to authorize Diab, Jerius and Sally Dale to work on this on the, the planning board's behalf?
Sure, I mean, I, I, we're, okay.
Yes.
So, can you, can you, um, are you just don't wanna do the line-by-line editing over the year?
Not after ten o'clock at night.
Okay, so, um.
Well, I.
I, 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 I'm more than happy with that. Um, my real concern is whether we have captured everything that people want. So.
Let's just keep zipping through or, or else.
I, I kinda think that, um, it's really wordy and there's, it's, it's like a word salad to me already. Like, I can't, if, if, Diab, you're able to help Sally simplify it and edit it, I think that would, it would be much easier for everybody else to.
Okay, so you would, you would, um, so Sally and I will work on this, we'll, we'll.
I mean, I, I can, I can also, I can also work on this. I mean, this, this was more of the two of you that, that, um, well, the, this was part of your subcommittee. I mean, that's essentially what you're doing, but, um, I, I, I can, I can help with that as well, but I guess.
I think I was a subcommittee of one at the time. I'd like to expand the subcommittee to include Diab in second E Ching's motion.
Okay, so why don't we do this? So, so Brian, each, Brian, whatever your name is today, Sally and myself, it's late, I forget who people's names are. Um, so yeah, so why, I don't know if we need a motion. I think we can just do this.
But she made a motion.
She made a motion. There was a second.
Okay, so then let's go through it. Um, like I said, I'm, my brain's running out of steam. Um, so, uh.
But Diab, I'll call you.
Sure, roll call, vote, please, since you made a motion. E Ching Scott.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
I second, I, I, yes, I.
And Diab Jerius, who now remembers his name, says I as well. Okay, we'll work on this and we'll try to get this. Um, I don't know what our next agenda looks like. It's already pretty full on the thirty-first, but let's see if we can squeeze it in there. I don't.
Well, so in a way of streamlining things, if Diab and Sally as the subcommittee come up with language and we send it out ahead of time.
We, we will do this discussion offline, Sally, I think.
Okay, good.
Um, because it's getting late.
It's late.
We can, we can finish off here with, um, at the moment, we have, um, our zoning hearing from seven-thirty to eight-thirty. I have a feeling it might not last the full hour, but it generally doesn't. And there's nothing about these articles, but just generally doesn't.
Is the zoning hearing about the two, the half-story?
Correct. There are zoning articles for town meeting.
And we just, we have one now?
No, we have two. We still have the.
Oh, the, the thing with engineering.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we.
But we also have others. So then, then we also had another twenty minutes of town meeting articles on the same night. Action items and executive session, session for mid-year department and board review. So the, the agenda is actually already set for the thirty-first.
I'm sorry, what did you say? The what department?
So it's my mid-year review as well as the mid-year planning board's review. This is the first or second one of the planning board reviewing themselves. So anyways.
All right, there's new information.
Yes, uh, the, the point is that, that that agenda is, is, is set.
I mean, it's full. I mean, we can tweak it, but that's why I, I've been, when we, the agendas have all been, if you go to the planning board's agenda or calendar, we've been loading up everything that's on the, uh, not loading up, but we've been putting future agenda items on the calendar so that you can see what's on there.
Right.
So that's there. So we're, we're, we've already, so just, if you look in the future, you'll see these. And obviously, they're not a set in stone until we send it off to the printer or to, uh, town clerk.
To town clerk, right.
So we have, um, one of the things that was discussed, um, back when, and one of the things that you may, or I don't remember. We, we discussed in, in Brian's performance review was to have more frequent, um, interim reviews so that we can make sure everything is on track, so that it isn't just once every year we sit back and say, what the heck happened? So that's part of this. And also because the planning board in that last review, and I know you folks didn't, weren't involved with that, actually made statements about what they would do in support of that annual review and our actions. Then we need to review what we've done in relationship to that.
Like taking responsibility for things.
Yeah, and so that's all part of that annual, that, this, this interim review to make sure that, um, if we have to adjust, um, some of the, um, the goals for this year because they're no longer possible or because the planning board has to change, has changed its priorities, we need to discuss that, so.
So, so, um, I would like our future discussion on this question to include frequency of meetings. I know it's a painful subject, so that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Our, our discussion on what? I'm sorry, I lost the.
Um, you, you were talking about in our next meeting that not only do we have a discussion of the town meeting zoning articles. Brian, if you pull up the proposed agenda for the thirty-first, um, that there was other things on the agenda and it included an interim mid-year department and board review. Okay, so at nine fifteen, we would go into executive session and we would talk about what we think this year to date for how the planning department is doing and this year to date for how the planning board is doing. Is that what the nine fifteen agenda item is?
It is, and, and because there are some open meeting law things we need to worry about, I have to talk about exactly how much. If we are gonna be talking about things that only impact the planning board and not the planner in terms of reviewing his performance, then that would probably have to be an open meeting rather than an executive session.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so if and when we ever talk about, uh, any, um, a, a discussion of how the board is doing, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, so we can, the, if you wanna put it on the agenda, send email to Brian and I and it will show up on, on the next available slot on the agenda.
Well, what did it, what did you mean when you put it on the agenda there?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Well, it was on the agenda, in executive session.
Yes, it was an executive session, but if it is something to deal with anything we're, in terms of, so for instance, the question about the, the frequency of planning board meetings, we need to do that in open meeting. That's not.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is only, this is, it's an executive session because we are doing essentially a personnel review. And there are certainly actions that the planning board had to do as part of that personnel review, but the performance evaluation itself is, is, um, privilege. So the only, the only, the, and I, I, I do wanna, we do have to make one last decision tonight and then we can get out of here, and that is simply, uh, do we want to extend our remote-only meetings on the planning board, um, through the next, through the rest of the year? Um, the backdrop, background of that is that we, we said we would do this through fall and see how things were going. The, uh, the technical setup in order for us to do a hybrid meeting exists only at Wind Cam. Um, I think it, it may be possible to do a hybrid meeting. I don't think that we have to have all members, we don't have to have a quorum in person, I believe. So we could say, anyone who wants to can go to Wind Cam and we can have a meeting there. But if the board prefers to do a remote only for the rest of the year, that's also another option.
Are we, are we discussing this?
We could discuss, we could, we can, we can have this discussion now or we can put it off on the August thirty-first.
Right, so, so the, the vote previously was that it was through summer. So as of right now, it's currently sits is that we were gonna reassess. We are now at that reassessment point, but we can clearly do that in two weeks.
The only thing is that, is the Delta variant, I have to unvaccinate kids and just don't know where.
Oh, I totally agree. I have no desire to go out into public meetings unnecessarily given the rampage of Delta.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, you know, to be honest, we don't have to explain our reasons. We could simply say, I am not comfortable and we can leave it at that. So if the board is not comfortable with going to a hybrid meeting, then we can simply say, we are continuing remote meeting until, I don't know, December thirty-first. Or Brian, do you have another suggestion?
That we've been doing it, to, to be honest, oddly enough, we've been doing it rather seasonally and literally meaning every three months, and that's typically how we do our schedules always. We always schedule out about three months. So we, what I would suggest is, there's no vote that's needed here. It's just so we have, we know what we're doing that from, yeah, from September to, uh, December, we will, we will plan out all those meetings and at the moment, those will be fully remote.
I concur.
That's what I mean. I'm just saying, I'm just saying what, you, you know, we typically, we go pre-COVID, it's always, we, we plan three months out, so that's what we should, we.
So I think, I think it's the, the consensus of the three members of the board who are here that we will continue remotely. Um, and I personally will try to understand what's possible with a hybrid at um, Wind Cam, because I, you know, just to see what the technology is available so that we know what's happening. But the board has decided to continue remotely. Okay, I think we are at this point ready to adjourn. Everyone, please say yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second.
Brian, you're not allowed to move.
Yes, he is. So, and I should turn myself on. I have been gesturing like mad and you haven't seen any of my gestures. Just, oh, that's great. Okay, so, uh, roll call, vote, please. E Ching Scott.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Diab Jerius, I, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, Wind Cam. Yay, thank you, town planner Brian.